Please to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for every day that you bless us with. Please be with our citizens that may be in distress, hurt, or just down on their luck. Please be with them, encourage them, strengthen them, and show them your love. And Lord, please be with this board as we do our business this night. Give us guidance in your name and your glory, pray. Amen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board members. First item is the approval, of course, of your agenda. There are two modifications to the agenda. First, there is a bullpen item regarding the adoption of a resolution requesting Economic Development Access Program funding from VDOT, and an attached resolution that is simply to authorize an application that is no cost to the county unless or until funds are awarded, drawn, and used. Second, Supervisor Marshall's request would be the removal of the Judicial Center Lane discontinuance of VDOT maintenance, which is scheduled as a public hearing. Request was to bring back an informational presentation explaining that item in better detail prior to any other process. And with those two adjustments, that would be your agenda for today's meeting.
I'm going to motion to approve the agenda with the bullpen items.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have...
I've got a question.
Mr. Skinner, go ahead.
You've added this to consent.
The...
And you've taken one out.
The bullpen item is in addition to the consent agenda, Mr. Skinner. The withdrawal item is the cancellation of the public hearing requested.
Before we make a vote?
This is just to set the agenda, sir. Yes, sir.
I understand. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a motion by Mr. Marshall. We now have electronic voting, ladies and gentlemen.
Seven, yes.
All right, thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to public presentations. Amy, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir.
I'll review quickly the guidelines for public presentations, which are as follows. Public presentations are an opportunity for citizens to present matters that you believe deserve the board's attention. These presentations are not part of a public hearing. Sign up to speak at each public hearing is separate. Public presentations are one-way communication from citizens to the Board of Supervisors. This is not a forum for dialogue or debate. To make a public presentation, please sign up on the sign-up sheet that is provided, and please print clearly. Please come to the lectern when your name is called. Please clearly state your name and your voting district for the board's records. Address your comments directly to the board. State whether you're speaking on your personal behalf, in which case you'll have three minutes, or on behalf of a recognized group, in which case you'll have five minutes to speak. Public presentations shall not be used to address matters that are subject to public hearings, or to make political campaign speeches, private advertisements, or personal attacks. And your written comments are always welcome. There is a lighted timer on the dais. Green means go. The yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds to sum up. When the red light comes on, the microphone will be turned off. Amy, who is the first speaker?
The first speaker is Al King, followed by Jackie Williams.
Alfred King, Livingston District. Good evening. I am representing the CIA, not the Central Intelligence Agency, but an organization Citizens for Internal Audit. At the last meeting, there was a brief discussion that there were some funds found by the school division at the last minute, and questions were being raised as to how that could come about. Several times in the last few years, the Citizens Budget Review Committee has recommended that the county hire an internal auditor. Our budget is $500 million. I have never heard in the private sector of an organization this large, $500 million, that does not have an internal audit function. In my presentation today, I am requesting that the county hire an internal auditor. It probably is not in your current budget for the fiscal year ending in June, and I don't think you have it in the budget for this year starting July 1st. But I also know that you do have some reserve funds. The total cost for an internal auditor would be in the order of magnitude of about $100,000 a year. It's hard to say in advance that an expenditure of $100,000 for an internal auditor will bring a many-fold return on that investment. I cannot guarantee it. But I've had many years of business experience working with and for internal audit functions, and invariably, they do a good job. They make sure that employees follow policies, and they investigate areas where there's a question. And if there is no policy guiding that particular action, they usually recommend to the management of the organization that a policy be developed. If you decide to follow our recommendation to have an internal audit, there's only one real requirement that I would suggest is not possible to be changed, and that is that the auditor should report at the highest level. Given the organization of the county government, the individual hired should report directly to the county administrator, but have the ability, the authority, to contact the Board of Supervisors in a closed meeting if something comes to their attention that should not be disclosed publicly. Putting an internal auditor at a lower level simply emasculates the function, and it cannot be as effective as if the independent auditor has full authority to investigate whatever has to be done. From your perspective as members of the Board of Supervisors, having an internal auditor is something that would be an asset for you. In the case of this school division funds that suddenly turned up, if you had an auditor present now, you could have asked for a complete audit of that particular transaction. As it is now, without an internal auditor, either you as individuals have to act as your own internal auditor, or there is no real independent investigation. My colleagues who are going to speak after me, I think, will confirm that an internal audit function is necessary. It can be afforded by the county, and we strongly recommend that you approve such a function. Thank you.
Jackie Williams, followed by Catherine Dennis.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Jackie Williams, and I live in the Berkeley District. I will make four points. How can we instill confidence in government and meet the citizen's desire to know where their money is going? An executive summary or categorical summary is submitted by schools to the Board of Supervisors, and this was agreed upon to save time. This is helpful, but without the complete detailed budget, the reader cannot get the full meaning of the budget. An example is salaries and benefits for instruction specifically. If they're not broken down by object code, you can't follow it, as fully as you should be able to. Therefore, it's difficult to determine what exactly is being included in the category. And again, I say instruction. That is a focus. And today, I am focusing on four items. At a time where there are scarce resources, we need to educate the public about the cost of government services, and explaining not just the cost, but the benefits as well. Because of time, I only have four. I have a lot more. 225 approximately out-of-county students cost over $1 million of taxpayer dollars in a local transfer. And for citizens who are listening out there, please see FY18 adopted budget, page 95, and you will see what I'm talking about. Why are... Another point, why are we spending almost $290,000 to replace contracted custodial care with in-house staff? My third point, after the Board of Supervisors meeting and before the following Monday for the school board meeting, $800,000 was found and freed up. And my last point, how is this money going to be used? Is it going to be used to raise the pay increase from the 2% to the 4%? And I thank you for your time.
Catherine Dennis, followed by Vicki Varela.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Catherine Dennis. I live in the Chancellor District. I am not speaking as a committee member of any kind or a county board member. Speaking solely for myself. I am most disappointed in this year's budget process. What was the hurry? We didn't have a state budget that had passed. Stafford just set their tax rate and approved their budget last week. They have a similar payment schedule to us, due June 5th, due December 5th. I feel like this rushing through the budget caused the board not to give it due diligence. One meeting, you're advised that you're going to be $2 million short, and you go through and you slash, and then the next million, no, it's going to be okay, but you didn't revisit it. I just feel, as a citizen, I felt it was rushed. And that's despite that massive carryover from last year. You voted again, yet again, to raise taxes. For those of us who are retired in this county, this is not sustainable. And I am not a come lately. I've lived my entire adult working life here in Spotsylvania County, so I didn't come here to retire, although I would like to retire in place. I also am very disturbed about the funds that were apparently found by the finance staff at the schools. We know how that worked out in Stafford a couple of years ago, and that's the county that I taught in. They actually, when they looked and they were audited, they found $8 million. How much more is in there to be found? Secondly, how can we, as a county, give our deputies, firefighters, and other county employees that are often here very late at night for your meetings, only a 2.1% COLA when we're giving the entire population of school employees, or they're giving the school board, is 4%? That is not what they presented to you when you passed your budget. They presented 4% for teachers and 2% for all other employees, and with a slight of the...
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Vicki Varela, followed by Keith Hill.
Hi, Vicki Varela. I live in Fredericksburg in Stafford County. As a military spouse, I'm outraged that a baby would be taken from the home of his family in the way that Juan Buckley was removed from his family. Captain Buckley has served this country in the Navy and has received numerous awards for his service. There has never been a problem in their family or anything that anybody has ever questioned. I've personally observed their children, their family, the baby Juan with his mother and father on numerous occasions. I've never seen a bruise. I've never seen anything that would make me concerned. Even after this happened, I examined closely. I want to know the facts. Juan Buckley was taken from his family 17 months ago. Think about a baby without his parents and siblings for 17 months. They have had to fight every single day just to have little visits with him, just to make sure he's taken care of. They have stripped them of every right that a parent should have. It's such an injustice. I can't even believe this could happen in America. And today, it's horrific. The Buckleys weren't just shipwrecked, but the entire community is heartbroken over all of this injustice. We all know and love this family, and we also feel a deep sense of loss of our own. Juan Antonio needs his natural family to be reunited. You have the power to correct this injustice. You have a process and an avenue that we, as individuals, do not have. The Buckleys have spent a fortune defending themselves. I was sitting in that courtroom when the judge, the judge against their criminal case, went through line by line everything the prosecution accused them of, and the judge not only justified, not only explained all of it, but justified their, but explained everything, and I'm sorry, I can't think of the word. The judge carefully took every accusation brought against them. He took it line by line. He answered for the Buckleys on every single thing in a methodical, honest way. He found no reason to continue the case and motioned for strike.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but your time is up. Thank you.
Keith Hill, followed by Victor Soto.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Keith Hill, Voting District, Stafford County, and here to, also on behalf of the Buckley family. I got to know John Buckley in our Sunday School class, and we served together as ushers at Temple Baptist Church. I came here today to share some observations about the Buckley family and ask for your help in accelerating the implication of Juan Antonio with his family. When the Buckleys came to Temple Baptist Church, my wife and I were quick to take notice of the Buckley families. They have eight children when they came, and they're larger than most families, we get to know. But we were quick to see how calmly and well-behaved all eight of their children were, and how quickly they got involved in church activities. Alma and the children are talented and devoted musicians. And I later remember my wife and I commenting how impressed we were with the skill John and Alma have in raising such a large family with the importance of faith, studying their academic work, and working hard, and participating in activities such as the church orchestra. And their children are always well-dressed, well-groomed, and well-mannered. And I know that their daughter Abigail goes to Pensacola Christian College and has made the dean's list multiple times. And their other daughter, Jasmine, one of their other daughters, Jasmine, works at Chick-fil-A and has been recognized as employee of the month more than once. My wife and I have two adult children, and so we know the amount of hard work and effort it takes to raise responsible children. And we are so impressed by the Buckley family as a whole. After Juan Antonio was born, their eighth, excuse me, their ninth child, we became aware of Juan's health nutritional challenges as a newborn. John and Alma had asked the church to keep Juan in prayer as he was having difficulty gaining weight as a newborn. And John and Alma were pursuing medical treatment in a couple different places as the initial care that they were giving wasn't helping Juan. But what ensued after that, we were just stunned when the Child Protective Services removed Juan from their home. And so, month after month, we saw them passionately ask for prayer as they diligently sought to resolve the situation of getting custody of Juan. They were faced with one challenge after another and unsuccessfully getting the system to understand the situation. They've been faced with significant legal and financial challenges, which has ultimately led to the criminal trial that Vicki alluded to. We couldn't believe this was happening, quite frankly, and yet it was allowed to continue month after month. And when the criminal trial occurred earlier this year, we weren't surprised to hear that the judge struck it from the record. And yet, after this trial, we were stunned again to hear that now they have to wait till October for a custody.
Sir, I'm sorry, but your time has expired.
Victor Soto, followed by Matty Paul.
Good afternoon. My name is Victor Soto. My wife and I live in the Lee Hill District. We are here to support John and Alma Buckley's family in getting their son, Juan Antonio, back. Current Juan Antonio, as has been said, is in the care and custody of Department of Social Services, Child Protective Services. We have known the Buckleys for almost three years through the church. We have become close friends with the Buckleys to the point where we have cared for Juan Antonio and the other younger children. On several occasions, I have seen the love and care that they have for their children, including their adult children. John and Alma Buckley are totally dedicated to their children, and we are sure that they will continue to be as dedicated when Juan Antonio is returned to them. My wife and I have been, we're foster parents for 18 years, and had over 30 teens come to our home. We care for them. So, we fully understand the difficulty of Child Protective Services as an ensuring that the safety and care of the children in the county when there are, when neglect is or abuse is reported. However, this is not, has never been the case with the Buckley family. There has never been any neglect or abuse of any kind that can be substantiated. The Buckley family's goal is to raise successful children that are loved in all possible ways. My wife and I strongly support that Juan Antonio be returned to them as soon as possible. And thank you very much for your work for the community.
Matty Paul, followed by Aaron Suttles.
Hi, folks. Matt Paul, Chancellor District, and also here on behalf of the Buckleys. A lot of what you just heard, you're going to hear a lot more of. This is something that I think a lot of us feel very strongly about. And this isn't something that I, as an individual, would typically do. I'm a retired Marine. I believe in government institutions. I believe in that process, and it almost always works in my mind. This one, something's wrong. Something doesn't smell right. Something doesn't seem right. We watched the Buckleys at church, have seen them at church for years now, and I wish that I was raising my kids as well as they are pulling it off with their kids. And to watch what has actually occurred in this situation is baffling to almost all of us. So, they deserve another chance to be reunited with their child, and I urge this body to take a hard, critical look at the process and the policies, see if they're being applied properly and unbiased across the board, and that the situation warrants probably a harder look. And you don't see this level of interest if something doesn't seem right, something doesn't smell right. Thanks.
Aaron Suttles, followed by Gerald Beaton.
Aaron Suttles, Stafford County resident. Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing the opportunity to actually speak on behalf of the Buckleys. I'm an active-duty sergeant in Marines. I'm originally from South Carolina, but had the pleasant experience of being a Virginia resident for the last five and a half years. I've been stationed at Quantico. Since that time, I've been a member of Temple Baptist Church and had the pleasure of meeting John Buckley and his family. I'm not here out of duty, although we are both in the military, I'm not here out of duty. I'm out of, I'm here out of Christian love for this family. I wish you could see the injustice that's happened. To the extent of them being a Christian family in my church and seeing interaction with them, I can speak on behalf of their character and on behalf of their parenting ability. Buckleys have a servant's heart. Even through this time, they've asked for prayer for not only themselves, but for others. They actively seek prayer in other people's lives and take an active role in asking how others are doing. That's just, they are an amazing people. As a father myself, I always would put a child first, but welfare is not a question in this family, not one bit. If you could see their children excelling and thriving through going to college, through musical excellence, you would see that the care and love that they put into their family is nothing beyond exceptional. Through personal interaction, I've seen this. I've witnessed this. I've talked to John. I've talked to their family, and my kids also go to this church with them. And like I said, the welfare of any of their children, including Juan Antonio, is not a question at all. The only negative impact on Juan Antonio is that he's not with his family. His blood, just dying to be with him and have nothing but his, excelling through life, they only have his best at heart. That's all they want. They just want to be reunited with their family so they can shower him with love and affection. I plead with you, use the power that's been bestowed upon you to let them love their child. I'm not usually an emotional person, but when you take family and tear them apart, that's just injustice. I plead with you to use your power to right this wrong.
Gerald Beaton, followed by Doug Stedman.
Hello. I'm Gerald Boington. My wife and I live in the Berkeley District in the county, and I here also speak on behalf of the Buckley family. And I wanted to attest to their character. I've known them for three years and, you know, at church, and talked to them every Sunday. They're faithful in their attendance and service, and they have wonderful children. And I says, I've interactively dealt with at least four of the older children, and they seem real normal and nice to talk to, and I'm glad they have lots of talents, musical talents. They play different instruments and are a real blessing. My wife has a young boy, Ezekiel, in his class, and he's a real blessing to them. And so, I just want to attest that, you know, that they're a real fine family, and I respectfully ask you to look into their situation. Thank you.
Doug Stedman, followed by Dick Jinnell.
I'm Doug Stedman. I live in Congressional District 7, Chancellor District, and the pond is still there. Forget it. But my point is, the things I know about law aren't too much, but I know a little bit. And the CBS building is going up on just the west side of Andorra Drive. A building came down there that was grandfathered in, I'm sure. The building is gone, and my knowledge of law is, if the building disappears, the grandfather goes with it. A new building cannot be built there because of the regulations that nothing goes west of the Andorra Drive. Now, the building's going up. It's almost... Now, the building's going up, it's almost complete. Down the road is another place. It's the old country, Store. Now, no stores are supposed to be west of Andorra Drive. And that one is there. He said he would sell memorabilia and trinkets. There's nothing on that sign, but the problem is, it's going to have you gentlemen one day, somebody's going to come along and say, "I want to develop down the road." Well, he can't build a store down here. He's going to say, "There's a store over there." That big word is this size, and there's no reason for that to be there other than to one day help people who want to develop. Have you ever been up to Chantilly and seen the highway? It used to be the green briar was beautiful. Then the builders came along and destroyed. You can't see the houses anymore. It's dirty and messed up, and that's what they want to do to Route Three west of Andorra Drive. But I say, he's got what he's had. He sells bread. If you sell bread, you've got a store. And he has a, you can eat breakfast there. I mean, he's got a restaurant. I mean, he said, "I was going to sell memorabilia and trinkets." And there's nothing on that sign that refers to memorabilia or trinkets. And he's going to land off his business going there, so he must be selling something other than trinkets and memorabilia. But the problem is, he has established that word "store" up there. He doesn't need that. And it's going to hit you in the eyes one of these times when somebody's going to say, "There's a store over there." And you're going to have to say, "Well, if we let him do it one day, Route Three is going to look like 95 or whatever out there at Chantilly." And I just don't want it to happen. The open space on the other side of the road where those houses are built way back off the highway, it's going to be the same. I think, I'll look at that the same as what happened in Greenbrier. The green grass was left way open. Now, where the houses are, there had to be battlefield also. I don't think it stopped at the top of that hill. Another thing, they want to traffic light there one of these days, and that's going to be a mess.
Sir, I'm sorry, but your time has expired.
Dick Jinnell, followed by Judy Jinnell.
Good afternoon. I'm Richard Jinnell, Livingston District. Virginia Law and DEQ Regulations contain more than 300 pages of requirements, conditions, and limitations that apply to the land application of sewage sludge, also known as biosolids. The regulations address treatment requirements, toxic metal content limitations, permit requirements, required local government and public notifications, storage, transportation, and cleanup requirements, setback restrictions, site access restrictions, permitted application rates, soils monitoring parameters and frequency, pathogen reduction requirements, and vector attraction reduction requirements. Several critical public health and safety and environmental protection conditions and limitations are depicted in the DEQ charts and figures included as part of my written comments. Please carefully review the information if you have not already done so. There's one item I feel compelled to highlight with you in my remarks now. One of the documents contained in the DEQ Regulations in the packet I provided is a form entitled, "Request for Extended Setback from Biosolids Land Application Field." The form is to be completed and signed by a physician to request an extended setback to prevent specific and immediate injury to the health of an individual. The reason the regulations allow for health-related extended setbacks is because young children, the elderly, and people with immune system deficiency are particularly susceptible to residual bacteria and viruses in sewage sludge that would likely be spread beyond the application sites by the wind, flies, crawling insects, rodents, wild animals, birds, and waterfowl. As has been previously brought to the attention of the Board several times in the past, there are 2,700 residents around the immediate periphery of the proposed solar site in western Spotsylvania County, including one community containing 900 homes. There are surely young children, elderly, and people with immune deficiencies living in those residences. Clearly, biosolids are not harmless substances that can be applied anywhere, anytime, without concern for public health and safety and protection of environment. In those circumstances, why would we take the risk? I think if people generally knew what was in those DEQ Regulations and the laws and understood what was at stake here, there would probably be a large-scale hue and cry not to have these things put anywhere in the county. Please keep the health and safety of Spotsylvania residents first and foremost in your deliberations on the solar power SUP applications. Thank you.
Judy Jinnell, followed by Vivica Berry.
I'm going to talk about vector-borne diseases and the retention ponds and drainage ditches on the S-Power site. The information that I have that I'm going to give you comes from the CDC National Center for Environmental Health and the EPA Vector-Borne Disease Publications and Sites, web seminars and so forth. So 60% of all diseases throughout history are transmitted by vector. 75% of emerging diseases are also vector-borne. Per the EPA, the vector-borne disease transmission comes two ways, biological and mechanical. The emergence and resurgence of vector-borne diseases are now increasing because of pesticide resistance, decreased resources for surveillance, prevention, and control, the deterioration of public health infrastructure, the unprecedented population growth, deforestation, uncontrolled urbanization, and changes in agricultural practices, as well as increased travel. The two types of vector-borne disease transmissions, biological is the most significant mode of transportation, and that's when an arthropod ingests a pathogen while taking a blood meal from an infected host, then multiplies within the arthropod's reservoir. The pathogen is then transmitted to another host through a blood meal. The second way, mechanical, the vector physically carries the pathogen from one place or host to another, usually on the body parts or through the gastrointestinal tract. Now, this comes to play with West Nile virus, and there is a huge concern about the increase in West Nile virus. The type of retention ponds and drainage ditches just make this a nightmare. And so I'd like to tell you more about West Nile virus. 10% of the cases are fatal. 20% to 30% of the cases have symptoms of neuroinvasive disease with meningitis, encephalitis, and acute flaccid paralysis. 70% to 80% are asymptomatic, but the problem comes when a mosquito bites them, they may be asymptomatic, but it can transmit that disease by biting another person, and they can have a fatal case or the neuroinvasive disease. Long-term outcomes for West Nile encephalitis and fever are persistent disabling neurological sequelae.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
Vivica Berry, followed by George and Nancy Duffield.
Good afternoon. I'm Vivica Berry from Lee Hill, and I wanted to talk about bullying in our schools. We have a severe bullying problem in our schools. Nationwide, it is nationwide, but we can't solve it nationwide. We can solve it in our own Spotsylvania neighborhood. If you are unaware, then you need to watch the public comments section of our school board meetings since January of this year, when brave parents and friends have been standing up to address this. I encourage everyone here tonight to watch these archives and attend school board meetings. Our kids are ending up in hospitals for physical and mental abuse and injuries. A trend among bullies is to encourage their victims to "just kill themselves." You can learn more about this by searching online under the terms "bullied to death" and "just kill yourself." I spent hours doing that last week. What is it going to take for you, our supervisors, to demand a safe and healthy public school environment for our kids? We, the parents and friends of children in the Spotsylvania School District, demand better. We don't want to end up in the news like Lennon Varnellis Baldwin or Mallory Grossman. We don't want to wait for a very worst-case scenario, something that hits the news, to make people wake up and do something. And I wrote each of you an article to read that I printed off, says, "Suicide Victim's Mother Settles Bulling Suit Against Moorestown High School." We cannot act as if this is not happening. In our newspaper this week, May 3 issue, headline, "Death of Despair Soaring in Virginia." You don't have to go into your closet and hang yourself with your father's tie to kill yourself. Opioids will do it also. Who would I pass these to to give them to you?
George and Nancy Duffield, followed by Matthew Moore.
George Duffield, we live in the Sees Road of the Livingston District, and I was listening to the testimonies of the Buckleys. We're here on behalf of the Buckleys, and we attend Temple Baptist Church. And I think just such wonderful testimonies about the character of a family. And then I look at 27 years as a Navy captain in the U.S. Navy, and I like to say, "I appreciate John and his service for our country, but I'm ashamed of the way he's being treated and his family." It's a very sad situation. John has had no prior criminal problems. Matter of fact, when they went to court, they were exonerated of all the charges against him, but yet they still don't have their child. I would assume most of us here have children. I was thinking about it today. I can imagine being one of my kids being ripped out from me. Yes, I know their child was sick. They took him to the doctors. They did everything they could do. You know, I was thinking about this a little bit ago. We serve a God of second chances. Maybe everything wasn't done right. I don't know all the details of everything, but I do know they're fine, upstanding people, and I wouldn't have no problem standing up for them. And I'm here today on behalf of them. I don't know what you can do, if anything, but something needs to be done, more oversight, something needs to be done with this Child Protective Services. I think it's out of control. I can't even believe I'm here talking on behalf of them for this situation. It's appalling to me. That's my wife Nancy.
Nancy Duffield, Livingston District, and I'm also here on behalf of the Buckleys. And I just beg you to please intervene on their behalf because they were exonerated in court, and there is absolutely no reason whatsoever that they should have to wait until October to find out if they're going to get their child back. Their child needs to be given back now. And I believe you have oversight of DSS, and you'd need to look into the record of the court case. There's absolutely no excuse for this. Thank you.
Matthew Moore, followed by Philip and Carol Lucas.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Matthew Moore. I'm from Fredericksburg City. I moved to King George, actually, is when I first came to the area, and joined Temple Baptist Church, where three years ago is when I first met the Buckleys. I'm here, as you know today, as you've heard, and will continue to hear, and will hear again at your meeting at 6:30, of just the second chances they deserve for the custody of their child. You've heard the 27 years of military service, you've heard that they're good people, you've heard everything. I have a couple of personal examples I'd like to share with you and a couple of statements I grabbed off of the VDSS website as well. One such occasion, Jasmine, their oldest daughter, and I were in the same Sunday school class for a while. And imagine, put yourself in her shoes, young girl about ready to go off to school, and she has a newborn little brother at home and gets sick, and you're kind of faced with a choice. You say, "Okay, can I help stay at home and take care of my little brother, help him out, or do I go to school?" And I was in the Sunday school class one morning where she shared a prayer request. She said, "You know, I'm trying to seek some guidance here, but I really think it's best for my family if I stay home and help out just with whatever I can at the house." And I don't know. I myself have graduated college now and have made a pretty decent life for myself, and I'm not so sure if I was that age and in her position, I'd be so inclined to make the same choice. Just a very personal example of what I could share, just the character of not only John and Alma Buckley, but also their kids and the support structure they have there at the church. I'd like to read two statements that I got off the VDSS website. The mission of Virginia Department of Social Services says that they are people helping people triumph over poverty, abuse, and neglect to shape strong families for themselves, their families, and their communities. The second thing I'd like to read is the goal of Child Protective Services is to identify, assess, and provide services to children and families in an effort to protect children, preserve families whenever possible, and prevent further maltreatment. They've already been exonerated of all the criminal charges against them, and no fault has been found on their behalf. And the goal of CPS is to preserve families whenever possible. For a baby to have been taken from them and having this long to wait until they get a hearing again in October, the child is now two. In this case, it's shocking, is the only way I can put it. And one last thing I'd like to leave you guys with is we've all heard the adage, "It takes a village to raise a child." As you can see from the number of folks who've shown up just to this meeting and the folks who will show up again, we have more than a village. It's just about an army at our church, and we love them and like to see them re-added. Thank you.
Philip and Carol Lucas, followed by Michael Reep.
My name is Philip Lucas from the George Washington District in Stafford County, and we're here on behalf of the Buckley family, Juan Antonio. We'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak on his behalf, on their behalf. And we'd just, we'd like to see Juan Antonio returned to his home, to his family. We've known the Buckleys for several years, and through the joint membership of our church, we have the opportunity to witness the entire family attending church, their participation in many activities. Their musical abilities are fantastic. The Alma and the kids, it's just amazing. We sit and listen to them every Sunday. We love it. When Juan Antonio was born, and he had, you know, some health issues, and his mother and father and family were extremely concerned about his health, and we just, the constant care in and out of the hospital, it's been hard on him, and then this happening, the child was taken from him. It's just hard to, I can't imagine that happening to one of our children in our family. The family, the mom and dad, siblings, would love to have Juan Antonio back home as soon as possible, not only for him, but to bring back the normalcy to the entire family. I personally cannot imagine, as I said before, a child being displaced, especially for this long. This is just, I just can't believe that this is happening. I know the Department of Social Services has a big responsibility, and every case is unique. I do hope the department will continue to provide help and guidance and funding for those in need, but also realize that many of the children need to be removed from their mothers and from their home, but I do not feel this is the case. And I feel that there needs to be some recourse, some checking up on the child services and find out why this has happened and why it's allowed to go on this long. I'm along with many others in hoping that the court lets the family reunite, and I believe this family deserves to have this family deserves to have Juan Antonio returned to home as soon as possible.
My name is Carol Lucas. I did not plan on speaking, but I will say, we continue to pray for the Buckley's, we continue to pray for Juan Antonio, and we will continue to pray for you all and Department of Services that the right decision will be made.
Thank you very much.
Michael Reap, followed by Lorraine McLaurin.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Reed, and I'm the pastor of Temple Baptist Church in southern Stafford and a resident of the same. I am also here on behalf of John and Alma Buckley, residents of Spotsylvania County, faithful members of our church family. I have witnessed the ordeal of Juan Antonio's health and consequently with CPS of Spotsylvania. I appreciate your attention to their need in the county's letter to Duke Storin, Commissioner of Virginia Department of Social Services. Where else can they appeal but to you? I have observed that CPS, at least in their case, makes the rules, interprets the rules, enforces the rules, seemingly with no oversight, input, or appeal. When another party had opportunity to observe their actions, the Court of Judge Regal here in Spotsylvania County, he granted a motion to strike, a stinging indictment of their actions, procedures, and conclusions. Your oversight and input of this county agency is necessary and needed. Thank you for your service and for your time.
Lorraine McLaurin.
Hello, Lorraine McLamore. I'm in this Chancellor District. I'm also here on the behalf of the Buckley's, known them for a few years as well at Temple Baptist Church. And Alma and John have shown nothing but devotion and sacrificial love to all of their children, including Juan Antonio. As a mother, I cannot imagine what they're enduring in having to go through this. As an upstanding citizen, both of them, and knowing their children, the adult children as well, and how they've been raised and trained up to be godly and upstanding citizens, I just plead with you to work on their behalf to bring their child home. Like I say, I can't imagine as a mother, also knowing John's service to our country and what he's given, and also Alma as his wife and the children, what they've sacrificed. And as a veteran myself, and as a mother of a special needs child, I cannot imagine what they're going through. So I just plead with you to bring him home. Thank you.
There are no other citizens that are signed up to speak.
Is there anybody that wishes to speak that did not come on?
My name is Todd Rumpin in Lee Hill District. I wasn't expecting so many people to talk for the Buckley family today, so I'll preface my original statement by saying this is no, my statement is not to counter anything they said. There is a specific issue that they have with a specific case that has, and my comments are more directed holistically about social services. So I hope they don't take anything. I don't know their situation, and that should be looked at as independent than anything that I say here. But through my volunteer work, I have worked with multiple people with Spotsylvania Social Services as well as Fredericksburg Social Services. And I'll start with that. Over time, I've had growing concerns about Spotsylvania Social Services and the position that this board has placed the department in. As elected officials, the responsibility for ensuring social services has the resources they need to fulfill their mission falls to you. I think each board member would be hard-pressed to argue that social services trending in a positive direction in this regard. The staff is overwhelmed because they are under-resourced, especially in comparison to neighboring localities. This undoubtedly is playing a factor in recruitment and retention. You may get people to work for less or tolerate increasing work demands or cramped office spaces, but you are unlikely to find people to accept more than one of those over an extended period of time. A few things specifically concern me. First, several months ago, the DSS director informed this board that the number of foster kids they serve is well over the number that they have staffed to adequately manage. Since then, this board has taken no public action to attempt to mitigate this dynamic or held any special session to brainstorm ways to employ stop-gap measures. Maybe nothing can be done, but in the face of this significant resource problem, this board's silence is deafening. Second, the board's lack of enthusiasm for addressing problems that have second and third-world effect is also concerning. One recent topic I believe directly affects DSS. I applaud Supervisor Trampy for a report that he asked for staff to provide last summer about the opioid crisis. However, I continue to be disappointed that these impacts were never discussed publicly, only provided as background material. If one read this material, it is clear, social services, fire and rescue, and the sheriff's office are feeling the brunt of this epidemic. And I am still puzzled at how such research and time was spent on a fringe issue such as water fluoridation, which took up several hours of board meetings, but no time was dedicated to the opioid crisis that is affecting so many county departments, to include social services. Any discussion on social services' space needs should occur concurrently with efforts to provide immediate relief to them, so that they can provide the services county residents expect. Our investment in social services is a direct reflection on the value you place on those most vulnerable in our community. After years of warning, and I'll just end there because my time's up.
Good afternoon, gentlemen and lady of the board. Thank you for your time. My name is Dustin Reed, and I'm a, I live in Chancellor District of Spotsylvania County. Eleven years in federal law enforcement. I'm also a member of Temple Baptist Church. I'm also here to speak on behalf of the Buckley family. I could speak to the fact that Mr. Buckley has been serving with honor as an officer in the Navy for over two decades, but I won't. I'll just speak to him as a father, as I have observed him, as well as Mrs. Buckley. I've had close and continual contact with their family for almost three years. I've had significant interaction with their two children, Josiah and AJ, through the youth group at our church. And those, AJ and Josiah, as well as all the other kids that my own five kids play with, they were joyful countenance, very respectful, well-behaved, well-careful, clearly nourished, clearly loved. In addition to that, my wife has also gone to their home and participated in a birthday party where, again, there was a lot of fun, laughter, and love being spread around in their home. We've been in their home. We've been around them for three years, every week, and there's nothing. You know, in addition to that, they were cleared of any wrongdoing criminally. So what are we waiting for? I urge you, as members of the board, the power that you may have as elected officials, the responsibility that you bear as you sit in that seat, you must, please, provide some oversight to DSS. Are they applying policies and procedures fairly, equitably, unbiased? I don't know. Can you please investigate and find out? Can you please provide oversight? In addition to the funding, look into the agency. Are they actually doing what they're supposed to do, protecting kids who need protection? Because Juan Antonio does not need protection. He needs to go back with his family. And please, we're all here to vouch for the Buckley family and to urge you to do anything in your power to investigate and do what is right, and that is returning Juan Antonio to the Buckley family. Thank you.